Call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, March 7th, 2023, and we'll stand if we could to have a moment of silence for the loss of Mr. Tucker's sister and then follow with the pledge. It brings us down to special recognitions and presentations, and first up, we have Darlene Starkey, and she is with Unit Care.
Starkey starts it. So I have a presentation of a check to give you, but before I do that, I want to talk to you about some of these items and why we do this. Last year, we helped the Harrison School Board out with some, put in the hygiene closet. So this year, we're going to continue to help you. And one of the reasons why is sometimes we take some things for granted, and just like if a child gets up and do they have socks? Do they have clean socks? So these are things that we like to put in this hygiene closet. Do they have floss? Do they have soap to wash? These are things that everybody takes advantage of every day, but this child does not have these supplies. The reasons why, it could be income, it could be, it could be 100 things. That's not my concern. My concern is to keep this child healthy. So by doing that, this will help to reduce germs. We have female products here for girls. We've had some girls that won't attend school because they don't have these products. So we put this in there. Kids come in, they'll say, you didn't brush your hair today. Well, you know what? Maybe I got taken out of the home last night, and the only thing I have is the clothes on my back. Maybe I don't have the brush, the comb. These will be part of the hygiene closet, and there's deodorant in there, there's Q-tips, there's even soap for your clothes, okay? We want all these things in here because they put these children on a, a playing field that brings them with the other children. If I can come in and I was able to wash, there's even a packet of water in there. Why would I do that? Well, for one, if you're dehydrated, you're not going to think as well. You're not going to feel as well. Number two, if the water has been turned off at my house, I cannot brush my teeth. I cannot use that soap. So that's why we put some bottled water in there. We want to cover all these aspects, and that's what we are here to help the school board out with because I'm with Unit Care. I work for a health insurance company. We do West Virginia Medicaid. I cover 11 counties in the state, but we are in every county. And you see me all the time. So we help just complete it, repack the backpack in the mall, and hopefully, we help the children to have those supplies for the rest of the year. Why do we do this? We want to give back. These are our members, but we want to keep them healthy. So if there's anything that's in that closet that can make that child sleep better at night, to know they have access to some of these items now, that's what we're trying to do. So that's why we're here too. So with that being said, let me grab some. Does anybody have any questions first? Any questions? Any questions back there? Okay. What did you think of this last year?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for the pack the backpack. They were at the mall and then brought in a lot of extra supplies for the kids. So we just saw you last week and, and the weekend there. So she's put in a lot of time helping Harrison County schools. And a few years ago, when you came and asked to do the hygiene closet, we have that stocked upstairs, and it is getting well-used by our students and our schools. So I can't say enough about how important it is, and everything you said is exactly true, and the needs are only growing. So I just appreciate your partnership with us and working with, with Harrison County. So it's always good when we see Darlene. She brings good news.
I'm coming to help out in some way or some.
Absolutely.
And with the, you know, there's going to be a lot of cuts coming. We all know that. We've been watching, and with the SNAP program being cut, it's going to make a big difference in people's budgets. So I think this is even going to be more important within the next, and that's going to be over a 14-month period, so.
And the cost of those items have just, you know, astronomically went up as well.
And everybody's been to the grocery store. So sometimes this helps them to redirect. Maybe they'll be able to purchase some food if we can help out with some of these items. But that's what we're here. So with that being said, I'll grab this. So we are going to present the school board with a check for $2,000 to replenish that.
Lola really is like the liaison with Darlene. So anytime we see Darlene, we're using Lola. So she does a lot of great organizing.
Organization.
Yeah, organization for stuff.
Coordination.
Coordination.
I enjoy helping the students. So, and I'm going to leave this with Lola, and it'll be the start, and then she can, you can purchase the items that you need. You know your students better than I do. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. That brings us up to our next recognition and presentation, and this is on School Breakfast with Mama Jill Harbor.
So National School Breakfast Week is this week. We celebrate from Monday through Fridays, March 6th through the 10th. So National School Breakfast was established in 1989 to promote the value of a healthy school breakfast. So we know that when kids participate in the breakfast program, that they're more alert, they're able to pay attention and with their concentration and memory, and they are easily, that enables them to reach higher levels of achievement in their reading and math scores. So in Harrison County, we've been trying to come up with ideas to increase our breakfast participation. On, so on May, actually on February 13th, we had a cafeteria managers meeting, and a representative from General Mills came, and she presented and taught us how to make fruit smoothies using, so they meet the requirements of our meal pattern. So they are made with yogurt and fruit juice. So we are promoting those this week at all of our high schools. That's the easiest place to get started. We started at Lincoln High School and Liberty today. I was at, I was at Lincoln today, and we served 100 smoothies. And so they filled out the response cards, and I laid one of those on each of your tables so you could see what those were. So they, kids were fantastic about filling those out, and, you know, I took them a bucket, and they put them in the bucket. So out of 100 smoothies served at Lincoln, we only had eight that tried it. And it was incredible to see that even though they just tried it, and they may not have liked it, they still offered comments. They still said, thank you for trying, thank you for trying something new. We loved the concept, maybe didn't like this kind because there's like 10 different recipes. So you have the mango-licious and that it's almost summer. So that almost summer is like tutti-frutti, but I wanted it to be summer. So I did that almost summer one. So, so they wanted to try different. So we are going to do this at each high school this week. So tomorrow, I will be at Bridgeport High School and United High School. Thursday, I'll be at RCB, and Friday, we will finish up the week at South Harrison High School. So we did have one elementary at Norwood. She wanted to try it with her students today, so she tried it, and it was pretty successful. Haven't got the comment cards back from Norwood today. And I do know that South Harrison, because One Kitchen serves all three schools, they are going to try a day at Lost Creek, a day at South Harrison Middle, and Friday at South Harrison High School. So once we receive the comment, then we'll proceed from there. It might be a new minute item.
Our comments are pretty good.
Mango side is the one question. Is there any more?
So I also just printed this. It's just stronger with school breakfasts. It has some statistics about healthy breakfast. Thank you. That shows that kids that eat, you know, they, school is the one place where they get the fruits and vegetables and healthy, healthy meals. So I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us down to item C, Nutterford Elementary Wetlands Funding Requests.
Good evening. I come before you again with all my notes. If you remember from last time, I am not a public speaker, so please hang on.
You got money from which you must have done.
Yeah, just hold on to that. Some of you may remember me from our first meeting in the fall of 2021. My name is Jeff Mitchell, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to address the body this evening. This is to give you an update on the wetland observation deck at Nutterford Elementary School since we last spoke. As you can see from the pictures, the changes have been pretty dramatic. The wetland received two sprains of a wetland safe weed killer about four weeks apart. By the end of the summer into late fall, none of the invasive plants had come back. I stripped the deck down to the frame one section at a time and then replaced it. The railings were also replaced. Trash was cleansed out. Unfortunately, you can't tell that now. I guess that tells you why it's been used a lot. Over 100 volunteer hours were spent on the deck, the railings, and trash pickup. I had the help of several master gardeners, one boy scout working on the merit badge, friends and family. Even before the deck was completed, teachers started bringing their students out for science lessons. I saw students releasing butterflies, identifying salamanders, tadpoles, and tree frogs. This is what the, this is what the area was originally designed to provide for these students. Also planted two butterfly bushes to try to attract, attract more butterflies in the area. Now, the drainage problem that I brought to your attention at that time still exists. The problems that I know that need to be addressed are from the creek coming off the hill into the wetland, which is causing it to move towards the playground. There is at least one four-inch drain pipe under the deck that is clogged up. A picnic table is mired in the mud along with two pieces of exercise equipment. And I think there's a couple, three or four pictures up there that shows you what happens after there's any kind of a rain whatsoever. Thank you for your generous donation, and also from Nutterford Primary Science Fund, Harrison County Master Gardeners. We had $6,000 to begin the project. As of this time, there's approximately $200 left. I know the board has been very busy this past year and a half with opening and remodeling schools. I am here again to ask this year for your help in resolving the problems and to continue providing a wonderful educational opportunity for the students and the community as a whole. I am still willing to provide free labor for this project if you're able to provide financial support. As of February 7th, the cost of materials should not exceed $2,500. With your approval and funding of materials, I would like to finish the deck. It extends across the wetland into the wooded area. Thank you for your attention. Any questions?
Nice, what I've done.
Yeah, it does.
Is it stained? I mean, after you put it down?
Well, that's, that's something you need to do probably just about a year after you put the wood down. Then, then you can start to get the pressure washing and stain it. So, so I will leave that up to you.
Yeah, I would, I would ask the superintendent to get with Mr. Mitchell and determine whether or not we can do that because I, oh, it's, I would think we should be able to.
Because your request was 500?
Miss State, I mean, you use that as part of curriculum, and you can see a difference?
Yes, and the community also. I mean, we are in the community area back there where people have birthday parties and do different things. So I think for our community, it's a very nice space, and he's made it very nice, and the kids enjoy it so much. And I feel like we used to always worry about kids getting hurt on the deck. We don't have to worry about that anymore. So we definitely know there's some things that still need continued and making that a nice space, but we appreciate him. He's done it all by himself, too. I mean, you know, we haven't had to have a crew or anybody else there doing it, so we very appreciate it.
Well, you mentioned birthday parties, and I think that's one of the reasons for the trash. I mean, that place is really used. I will come in on a Monday morning after, you know, working on that deck, and there, the trash cans are just jammed full. They're just, there really should be maybe a larger container or something, maybe to take care of it.
We can talk to maintenance or custodians, too, about that. I mean, it gets full. There's little garbage cans out there.
Yeah.
So what's your $2,500? What are you going to use it?
Uh, wood and screws.
To extend the deck?
Yeah. That'll take it, that'll take it clear to the end of it.
I, I, I'll echo what, what Mr. Devano said. I'd ask that we put it on for the, I would say, you know, put it on for the $2,500. That's, I think for free labor and something like this, that's valuable.
Do it quick. I'm 71. She is a very good supervisor. Harsh taskmaster.
Well, I'm, but we also want to thank you.
It's actually been my pleasure, even though I came home a few days pretty tired.
I'll make sure we get it on the agenda.
We'll get it on the next. Thank you. Hey, Mary Francis, are you on there? I think she's listening. All right, that moves us down to item four, delegations. We have no delegations. Superintendent's update.
Sure, I have a few things. I wanted to first recognize Mr. Lopez for getting us on the list for the electric bus rollout. Yeah. So we ended up having that press conference and the delivery of the bus, and I have to say, we got to take the maiden voyage, and Mr. Tucker was there, and Mary Francis came to the kickoff of that, and it was quite fun to ride the bus.
I got to ride twice.
Did you get to ride it twice?
I rode it the first time, too.
Yeah. What did you think of the ride? It was pretty?
I thought it was, I mean, you know, it just reminded me of going across countries. What was, you know, you had German air and everything right there. They had to tell us quit playing with it a couple times there, reaching out monkey with it, I think. And Jim Langer drove the first time.
I missed that.
And he did great with the bus. And we put it through some hills, really.
They have their own air conditioning units. I mean, it's like they kind of want to tour us.
Now, once they do that, that's the spec bus or whatever, will it still be the same way? Will they be more like?
No, they'll, well, they will, they will spec those out more to West Virginia State.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, that.
That bus was built for California.
I think it'll still be similar to that. We call those transits, the flat nose bus. Yeah, but I think that they're, that is at least for grid power, yes. But then other manufacturers are making a more conventional West Virginia-style bus.
We can't get from.
Definitely quiet. It's definitely quiet. I think Mr. Lopez has an update on facilities.
Hannah, we're going to talk about where she drove it second time with students. She went through with you. I mean.
And we did excellent job. Very well behaved. Now, the adults.
Back of the bus, didn't they?
Lopez was on there. That's why, that's what we're talking about, really.
We had Josiah and David Oliverio all rode the bus. It was exciting.
When you have a bus that's so quiet, you have to put a bell on it. It takes off, so you'll hear, and that's pretty.
Sounds kind of like an ice cream truck. Anyway, do you have an update on facilities, Mr. Lopez?
Uh, I do. We did sell the Bristol terminal, and it sold for $40,700. So Laura and I just signed the contract today. And so Andrew Yoder from Coffins is ready to move on the Adamston facility, and then also the houses. And he, again, we sold those properties as an absolute option, and it's been successful. We've gotten, you know, more money than we kind of thought that we would. However, you know, now we're ready to sell the Adamston. So he suggests, strongly suggests that we go ahead and do this absolute because there's, you know, it's one thing to try to sell and make some money for this. We're not, no, we're not. It's taxpayers' money, so we want to be prouled. At the same time, we really need to get rid of it because of the overhead costs, you know, just the maintenance to it and the utilities. So I would suggest, I've got a lot of confidence in their recommendation to go ahead and do an absolute auction. That makes people realize that you definitely are selling. There's no strings attached. They're not going to pull it out from you, that they have an option to buy it. So if you guys are okay with that. About the houses, do, do, do they appraise those before they begin the ballpark? Because the people who are at the base are going to move. So Andrew Yoder, he discussed that with me today. That, I mean, you're not going to get appraisal value. We're probably going to get less. The one at Liberty is in bad shape. It's not that good. The one, no, I'm sorry. No problem. The one at Bird was not in as good a shape. But we, the one over at Liberty is in pretty good shape.
And they're figuring, I mean, when they're thinking, they got to figure what is going to cost them to move it. So that's, that comes off of what they're willing to pay.
And I think it was one of those things. He kind of wanted me to discuss with you all that the chances of the bus bringing very much money out of those malls are not so good.
And I think as far as the option, we've, you know, we, we've made the decision to option it, like the absolute. We've always kind of left that to staff to do.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. You've done a great job.
In case they don't.
Oh, we have. We've moved some property.
Oh, we, he.
Property whisper.
Yeah, you've done a great job. You've moved the properties, and I think getting this house under them, you know, it's going to save us a lot of money in the home. I think you're right. Andrew's a good one to trust with that, too. If he says absolute on that, I would definitely agree with that because he knows what he's talking about.
I think what, what Doug says, we trust you. We trust you with our building, the moving of them. So do what you think's best, Stones.
Thank you. Even though we did agree, right, it was purpose, you know. Also, I left for you the, the mowing contract that you could see move one of those bids. I didn't put it as part of the, you know, the business because it's, we're just following the policy for that and taking the low bid. And then also the, the herbicidal, the company that got it. Other than that? But it says Western Harrison. What does that, what does that include? Well, that is, you know, the gore and all that area in that, and then I think also Liberty. Yeah. Yeah. So when I say gore, I'm talking that whole piece of property because we own from Victory all the way around to the warehouse and over the maintenance and up to the transportation departments. There's a good bit of grass there.
Does it include Salem, too?
No, Salem's separate. Salem's separate. Mr. Lopez, we, these folks that won, have we had them before? We have.
Last year.
Pardon? Precision is new.
Okay.
And I anticipate that they'll be, that they'll do a nice job. And yes, we did Evergreen last year, and they're, they performed much better as the year went on. So Danny and I, we, we have already kind of met with them, and I think that we'll have to get out. They're only as good as their workers, and if they get into a situation and there's change over with, with employees, I asked them to make us aware of that. And if we had to, we can send out someone to kind of oversee different areas as they're cutting it so they don't leave it undone. That's the plan.
Are they doing less properties Evergreen than they had? The same ones?
Yeah. And you could see the prices were, I mean, it was pretty reasonable.
On the rest.
We'll move on to personnel. Lena Slesberg has a, you want your hand out or you want to do that? It's just her overview of personnel. Jill Markey, we've met with the principals.
Thank you.
This is the general overview.
What's coming?
What's coming?
Mary Francis? You still there?
Just an update comparing from last year. We need to discuss this detail, or do you want me to?
Sure, you can read it.
Okay. Because we've discussed professional employees. We are currently eight over. The budget is around, compared to 44 last year, and 62 service.
Okay, I think we lost it. Okay. Well, I was just going to let you know, we have a handout from Ms. Slesberg, and we'll get you a copy.
Yeah, we'll get it.
We'll email to you.
From the state, we, there was a decrease in enrollment by 76 students. And then, of course, you know, enrollment directly affects the number of positions that were funded by the state. So 85% of the county's budget is dedicated to salaries and benefits. And these changes of staffing, they need to occur between January and May 1st. So this just goes into a little bit more detail with the professional employees. The stated formula funds 764 positions, and Harrison County employs 700, or employs 772. So that's in excess of eight. We lost funding for 10 positions over the last year. And then for the service personnel, the stated formula funded 439 positions, and Harrison County employs 501 positions. So we have an excess of 62 positions. Last year, we lost two funded positions.
And that's a direct result of enrollment.
Absolutely.
But on the professional side, all my years on the board, we've never come anywhere close to that number. I mean, I don't even know that we've ever been below 30, or maybe even 40, you know?
To be eight over?
We were looking at the positions that between the two schools, the consolidations, everybody got a job. We were able to reduce multiple classrooms. It's really, and, and nobody really. didn't get where they wanted to be.
Right. It all, it all worked out right. Um, but the student enrollment, you can see the projections, um, this from here on two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-three.
And that's all settling.
Into the decline. Yeah. Which, you know, in turn goes with the funding. My homeschool numbers for this year are one thousand and ninety-nine students and our virtual students, a total of forty-eight. We have fourteen at the middle school level and thirty-four in the high school level.
We're seeing the homeschool numbers gradually reduced back down. So I hope that's the trend that we continue to see as we're back into more of a stable school year and, and pattern.
Cause it was almost five hundred.
Right. Yeah. In a normal year prior to COVID, our homeschool numbers at the end of the year were usually around six seventy. So that was a general number every year, you know, for several years. So it drastically went up and then it's starting to trend back. I hope that's a good, good trend.
And, um, next, we have the state aid. That just shows the trend from two thousand, uh, fifteen this new year to two thousand twenty-three. Once again, with us, professional eight over and service sixty-two. The amount of retirements, they need, um, to notify us by March, so the board should approve them by March first. And there was a total of nine professionals and eight service positions. So that's pretty consistent with last year, but definitely it has produced some to three to two.
Yeah, I think it's a few on private page there with sixty-two.
Yes.
Uh, in service, where would that be? But it's letting you, you know, have an idea.
Aids.
That's what I would say, aid classroom, absolutely.
Which is definitely a need.
Right.
And that's, there have been more trends where they're going.
Yes.
Giving more aids.
The, uh, i- if the bill in Charleston goes through, it's going to provide an aid from K through two. What, what, what kind of, um, I wouldn't say burden, but what kind of mediation would we have based on that funding standpoint? Cause they're gonna fund certain positions. Are those positions gonna be, are we gonna take that into account to lower our service personnel? Or we're going to add positions based on that funding?
It would be gap. And because they're adding to the general education classrooms, which currently don't, they're not located right now.
We're already funded for the aides and kindergarten and so, and pre-K. So the state in that bill, they're supposed to supply the funding, our state aid formula. Money should increase. Oh, yes. Yes, they're supposed to fund these positions. But of course they fund them at the lowest rate. The word salaries are a little higher.
Right.
So, I mean, it will cost us some money for sure, if we can.
That's what I was wondering.
It will cost us.
That's if we can find us.
Yeah.
I was wondering what kind of, well, I guess we have to wait and see, but I don't want to speculate.
It will affect counties differently. Just simply because it depends on the pay rates of the counties.
Yeah, thank you. If they give, let's say they give every county the same number, ten to Weird County and ten to Harrison County. Weird County, it's a wash. They're paying on that. Harrison County, those ten are gonna cost us. We're gonna get that salary, but we're not gonna get supplements that, that we provide from the levy. So obviously it's gonna cost us. So the good thing is it is, that number is coming from the sixty-two. Yeah. Right. Cause it's needed now anyway.
One consideration, if you currently now, if you have a second grade classroom or even a first grade classroom, and you want to keep, say your numbers lower in that classroom and say a school has two first grade classrooms, they could potentially combine into one. Now, if we say, no, we'll just keep both of those, then we're gonna have two aides. And I believe the, the state will fund us on the amount of students. So there could be some potential to where we will be placing aides without funding, which is okay as long as we can do that. But you'll be less likely to, those lower number classrooms, counties are gonna be looking, okay, if I have to put a teacher and an aide in there, it's much more expensive to have kindergarten and pre-K funded then because you're, it's two adults for those kids, which is, it's a great thing. But if you, there, I think their thoughts were to provide support, but I, I'm in my mind thinking that if you have, like, say, for instance, where you have really low numbers in two classrooms, the county's more likely to put that into one and have that classroom at twenty-three or, you know, that top number, cause you're only gonna pay for one aide. So I, I think there's gonna be some to things that's gonna come out of this that you're not normally thinking about. You know, be great. What if you have a second grade with, say, eleven children? So you're gonna put an aide in there where I think you have to have ten or more to, to put the aide in. So there's, there's a lot of little nuances that's going to happen. We'll have to see what it will cost us out of, you know, our general fund.
Yeah, I was watching on the news and I don't know whether she's a senator or what, but she was a schoolteacher, you know.
Yeah, I think she's had a.
And all, you know.
Education.
And she was always one of those that fought, you know, we need more money. We need, you know, more staffing and what have you. Now that she's on the other side, well, we, we may not be able to fund all these. And everything she's taking the high road saying, well, there may not be enough funding to pay for all these aides and everything, but we do gotta have them. So.
I think there's consideration now as to whether these have to be ECATs, right? So that's a whole other, we, they, they are paid more in ECAT plus their training involved in that. So the counties will be, I'm sure, putting the bill for the training. It depends on if it can just be a classroom aide or do they want a classroom assistant? And I believe they're leaning towards classroom assistants, like an ECAT. And it, it costs more and, and they, they have more training, which is not a bad thing, but there's gonna be cost to the county for sure.
And it isn't gonna take long for us. I can't see it taking off the first semester if they pass it because just getting people is.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Henry.
Maybe a gradual add of the first grade and see if you can get the employees and then, but, you know.
Well, you know, and, and I believe too, if, if we're gonna have aides and we're increased adding more aides, I think then we need to have the aides a full day. But, you know.
Eight.
Eight-hour days rather than, uh, rather than a seven and a half hour day. Because with the number of kids that you're having and, you know, going here, there and everywhere, those extra hours and all, it's only thirty-one minutes.
Our current aides are six and a half hours.
They're six and a half, whatever. I think we need to improve.
That's a whole conversation.
I know some of them have done this. They leave twelve or fourteen, they leave before school's out.
Yeah.
And you got parents waiting, looking for the child where I think they're around those kids every day. And that, so they would be able to make sure that each child gets to their parents when they're picking them up in the afternoon. I mean, it, it, that may cost a little more money, but I think it'd be money well spent. But, uh, they work, they work a full day, you know, a lot of, not six and a half.
Definitely something to consider.
You know, just like the teachers work. In that way, it's collaborations there between us. That's my opinion.
In the next page, these are, um, our projections for, uh, positions to abolish. And then the next, um, I put an estimate of pay of what their salary would be on the side. Then the next page would, that is a list of the potential, um, positions that we are wanting to create and the, the amount of the cost that would be and then the difference.
You look at that, the music piece of that, we're trying to correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually they'll get more.
Yeah, when I looked at the original, I thought, abolish music.
I know.
What I received in finance was their average salary, so it doesn't take into effect their benefits.
Right.
That's just average.
So we're not losing music teaching.
No, no, we're actually adding.
Okay.
That, we actually had the conversation about music and this is a fix for the elementary. We've had the position at Moss Creek West Hartford open all year, correct? Maybe two years. Two years. So you have to do something to make that job attractive because it's killing that music program over there. So. So that was a solution. I believe you said in August, you'll sit down with all the music because we're gonna look at it county, just countywide, our bands, our, just our programs.
Touch stream line.
And, and make it flow and make sure we've got every theater area covered. But it's a big process that whole looking at a theater area.
You know, we try to put, put one in every school or, you know, or twenty-two schools or whatever, you know? Way back in the days, you know, there was a one lady that traveled the entire county. She taught music at this school today or, you know, and all, she had the whole county, you know, and you, you got music maybe once a week, you know?
It's important for kids. It's very important.
Right. Very difficult, though, for them to actually.
If they don't have that experience in, in the lower levels, it really hurts your middle and high school. So it's, it's gotta be a whole programmatic. We've got to look at it from a programmatic sense. And how our kids are feeding into the middle school programs and high school programs and really look at our show choirs, because I, I believe we have some high schools that we don't have. We have great show choirs and we've got some that don't have any show choirs. Just lots of things to look at.
And we discussed this involving schools in law to make sure they need to get, like these, you know, proposals.
Well, these were the positions to be created. What is it gonna be the purpose of the dean of students at the two high schools?
Those are, that's on the wish list and I think they'll give you. Well, that's, those, those were requests that we're really looking at highly. They don't, we don't have to go there, but um, that's been a need. I think Bridgeport High, simply because of their numbers. They're dealing with a lot of kids coming through and I believe that would be to help with, um, it's a relief because now our counselors are doing a lot of administrative things. And I think that this position could help, so counselors can be counselors and they could work on, on the transcripts and each, I will tell you, for our C bird and Bridgeport High, because of their numbers is why we're looking there first, is, um, looking at those jobs a little differently on how they may use them.
So they'd be in line with an assistant principal or below a assistant?
I think we've talked about that on where would you want those and that could be a discussion. I think probably a below that pay, you know, you don't wanna put another assistant in.
I think a dean of student always has that position.
Sometimes they call them registrars, you know, or.
Depends on what county.
Whatever, being flexible. Yeah, Bridgeport's got a lot of students.
The principal, does that mean that they don't have an administrative certificate?
We've discussed that. There's four or five different, we're looking at different job descriptions and working with those high school principals. And we'll bring that to you. I mean, I don't know what, what your thoughts are. You were high school, secondary, um, there were talk, thoughts that it should have an administrative, uh,
Well, if they would have an administrative certificate, then they would be like almost like in another assistant principal at that point and then would be responsible for all the prescribed in the other assistant principal, correct?
Yes. If you've required that.
And I think that's where I would have a problem because it doesn't correct the problem if, if our job is to make sure that they do the registration, you know, do all of those things to take it off for the guidance counselor. And then all of a sudden, they're at a football game and they're doing this and that.
Yeah. That's all been discussed.
But during the dinnies, when they would be doing their registration and dealing with all of the, um, necessary issues to get off, the, the issues off of the counselor or the letting the counselors do that. Um, that's just like anything like scheduling or anything like that, that's done during the day, not, it doesn't have anything to do with the, to be lucky to basketball game.
Right. And you could, you could do a lower contract.
What other duties do you want that individual to have?
And I guess my thing is I just, and I'm not, I'm just using a football or basketball game as an example, but I don't want them, us to bring someone in, we're creating something to take care of a problem, meaning the registry, the, the stuff that's been, you know, dumped on guidance counselors and the scheduling and all that. And then all of a sudden you say, well, yeah, you're doing this, but I need you over here to do something else and I need you to do bus duty or whatever today. And then you end up just being another vice principal. And then before you know it, they don't have time, they, they, they're coming back to us. I've seen it before. Asking us to hire another person to do the scheduling because they can't do it because they've got another dude. I would just rather it be more defined.
Yeah, off prescription.
Yeah, we have several that we're kind of thought, looking at, because it, it's.
So I guess from that standpoint, since it's the overview, we'll wait until you bring something back and then we'll, we'll debate that discussion.
Why there's no, oh, no, just.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I did.
It's not issue, Stone, it doesn't.
Yeah. This is just what we're looking for. So we've got time.
Now, those BOAG positions, right now, there's a halftime BOAG at Lincoln and there's a, and that person goes to United. So they're asking that, that the one at Lincoln just be full-time and the one at United be full-time. And I talked to Mr. Kirby about the United position. They need another completer and they only have a BOAG person there a half a day and it's very difficult for the kids to get the completer, to get all the courses they need. So that one is, we would like to see that one happen.
And I, I'd be for it because we talked from the beginning about adding Greenhouse.
Lincoln wants to grow their BOAG and they've got a person and a half. Most of our high schools have.
Yeah.
Two, I believe.
And the.
And so there's.
So that's where we have two, one time.
Yeah. So that, that's where that came from.
Yeah, I'm.
I don't think the only side they have to do.
United.
It's all the.
Yes.
What the students are doing.
It's trying to get those kids graduated with a completer and that's a requirement there. So currently they have business and they have a halftime BOAG.
And I think the BOAG's important at that school as their completer, you know, program. Like that would be.
I think you're looking at the, the greenhouse getting that set up down there, correct?
That's correct. United, yeah. It's a, it's a very large one, so.
Yeah.
That'd be very nice.
Just trying to provide more options. I think the last few pages are just your normal dates. Just to keep you. And required dates. I think that's it. Other than in your packet, I just wanted you to see. Um, there's a list of the required state trainings. It looks like this. Just for you guys to see how much that has grown and what they require us to get done in a school year. Mandatory training.
How did Monday's training go?
Good. Yeah, they did their, they did the body safety focus one. It's on here.
Great.
Yeah, that's, that's all I.
Yeah. And then moves it down to, uh, approval of consent items. Is there a motion?
Well, that's clear shit.
Oh, I forgot.
Sorry, I had you on the list. We had a career center meeting all Friday or technical center. So.
We're making fun of it, I know.
Sure. Where's phones at?
Yeah.
A little bow down.
A little bow down.
And shorthand, Mr. Henry. Aren't they in shorthand?
Uh, no, they're in long, long. Uh, first of all, some things I remember, door, what are we with the other? Uh, they had six, they're getting ready for the, uh, state competitions. They had sixty representatives from the career center. And there is a total of, I believe, forty different events that are going to go on. And they're going to be in different places. There are gonna be some at Fairmore, some at, uh.
Jackson Square here in town.
Yeah, Jackson Square. Now it's Career Center. There's gonna be like seventeen different competitions going on at the same time. Uh, and we're getting all ready for that.
They're hosting this date.
They're hosting and everything. They just, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's very, very good. I mean, they, you know, to get sixty upper, you know, medals, you know, awards and all. Uh, so like I say, the programs down there just seem to keep growing and, uh, you know, kids are doing, doing really well. We did talk about, threw it out there about the possibility of, uh, maybe adding sophomores, you know, they said they really can't. You know, they said they really can't take freshmen in because of the way it's scheduled at the school. They can't get everything they need there. So, but they said they're, they do have a few sophomores.
I think they have about thirty that's happening ever.
So in, in, it's not in their programs and they maybe can look to increase those a little bit, uh, more and get more sophomores into.
David Roach talked about, that's one of his pushes is to freshman sophomore into, into Texas.
Yeah, it's high school graduation.
I don't have a lot of faith in the state, to be honest. You know, they, they pushed for all these programs and won all these programs, but they don't want to fund these programs. You know, uh, you know, just like supposedly they're going to give teachers, you know, they're going to give a pay raise and then they increase things, you know, the insurance rates. So, you know, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul there. So instead of just giving them a nice raise, they go give them a raise. Then they're going to turn that around and jack up the prices that are up P E I A. So, you know, it, I always see it's all over, you know, here. But, uh, Matt, you know, like I say, down there, Matt and, uh, Mr. Fraser, they're really, really out there doing, doing a really good job. But pushing programs down there and all.
Mr. Fraser has started a, where he's going out to all high schools trying to.
Four more kids.
So they get to know him.
Yeah. But like I said, there was a couple of the things where.
I think they should transition into offering it to sophomores first. Uh, I think they need to transition then to, it may take a couple, three years to do that, but to offering sophomores the opportunity to go there first.
We even asked, we even was tossing around what if, like, we could supply them maybe a couple or a core.
Core teacher.
Core teacher or something. Would that help alleviate them meeting their credits for their high school? I mean, that's all things you'd have to work out logistically, but if we could harder, you know, and Mr. Cheeseman in Dogged County could supply one.
Yeah.
We could get enough, we could get enough core teachers there.
They will supply the body, they can supply them the money and all, so.
They just have to think out of the box, you know, to really make it work.
I, I just, I just took that out at the end of the meeting and then it became a full, little discussion about adding sophomores and all that more. Because, you know, yeah, well, because, or because bottom line is, you know, not every kid wants to go to a four-year college. But this way here, they can get a, you know, a hands-on craft, a position and job that they can do. And make a very, very nice income and everything. So hopefully we'll get a more progressive one.
Sophomore gets in there can actually end up with two trades. We went to thirteenth year. We're sending a fair offer to the freshmen and they got in and started. They could do it in four years, but at least they could still do and have two.
And like I said.
Location.
Yeah, the big thing is, like I said, in normal, they lost a few at the semester, but, uh, they lost a lot of adults at the semester. More so than the actual students out of the schools. So, but anyway, uh, I think the career center is, you know, going, going very well. You know, they're, they're going a little bit onward and upward and all.
These sixty have to test and qualify, don't they, to go to the competition?
Yeah.
So it isn't like they're just going to pick out students to go.
Breakdown how many was in this department, cosmetology, how many was in nursing and how many was.
Drafting, drafting did really well.
Drafting and all, so. Anyway, that's maybe all I have for you now. I need more next one.
Okay. And moves down to approval consent items. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent items.
Seconded. Any discussion?
One question. Uh, I can't find it now, but Omni and Associates, what was it that we?
Which one?
Omni and Associates, we had them, what did we have them do?
Good, that the United Technical Center, they used Omni. Technical Center, they used Omni.
Okay.
What page is that on?
I'm trying to find it again. It just says.
I saw that too and I even asked, okay, we've not used Omni. And it was G T C, yeah.
Okay.
They're using them for most of their projects. Which is as their funding that was given to them, that the councils voted on.
Uh, any further discussion? All those, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Out of state travel study request.
I'll make a motion to that group.
Motion approved, seconded by Mr. Cocker. Any discussion? All those, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Fiscal year twenty-two, financial statement, we get copies at the last meeting. Anyone has the questions, those were prepared by.
So.
Do you have some questions?
I'll write the questions that I have down for you.
Good.
I have a couple of them here.
Get them answered.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll give them to you.
Sure.
Yeah, as I hope you.
We can, you want to table this?
Yes, please.
From, from motion to table. Second, moved in second. Any discussion? All those, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I think that's prudent thing.
Yeah.
Uh, no policy updates. Brings us down to personnel matters. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, go into executive session. Uh, I'm in pursuit to Oracle six dash nine, eight dash four, two of the West Virginia code that we're going to executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which if discussed in public, might affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, all those, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Will be in executive session. Mary France, I'll call you on my cell phone. I'm going to hang up on you then.
Legal and disciplinary matters, and we do have a my connection, a three day unpaid suspension for employee A. Is there a motion?
I motion we accept.
The as President.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second, all any discussion? All those in favor of sign five of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and that is for the three day suspension of Diana Barber. Brings us down to board member comments. Mr. Coker?
I do have something written down. Okay, since you got your one. I would like for, I would like for all of us to consider the purchase of more of the vape detectors that Mr. Poole with hopefully had an opportunity to speak with him. I know I did after the last meeting and was very enlightened on what they really can do for us more than just identify someone using of the vape. So if you haven't taken time, please just speak with him for a couple minutes there. It only take that. I propose that we consider using the $80,000, I think that Gary mentioned last meeting, use it not only that, but to put in another hundred thousand dollars of the monies that we have been getting from the sales of property so far, because that's facility, to use that because it's obviously a need. And I'm not talking about waiting until next year or next. We need to do it now, but I am proposing this to everyone to think about that. Let's not wait. Let's get on it, do that. And also, I'd just like to say that Mr. Poole and Mr. Snyder did an outstanding job of presenting the information to us at the last meeting on what's going on in our schools, what safety procedures have been going on, and what has really been done to keep our students here safe. But I'd really like for us to consider that.
I agree with you. I just like maybe you get with speaking with Jimmy a little bit as to because like you say, all this money's coming in, but I don't know whether, you know, was any of it earmarked for something else? And, you know, and if it was or it wasn't, you know, then maybe there's a, we can come to a happy medium. But I agree that we need to do it now, get as many into the schools as we can and all as, as quickly as possible.
Not just in the areas that we talked about, but other areas that we discussed that would be very beneficial. Not just in the areas that we talked about, but other areas that we discussed that would be very beneficial.
I think to your, to your point on being a, you know, we've been told that, you know, we've got the $80,000, we don't have it yet, but that doesn't mean we can't spend that 80 and then backfill, you know what I mean? Go ahead and get the vape detectors, and then when the 80 comes back, fill that back into the general fund. But, but my component with this, and I hope your, is also those defibrillators to increase those.
Yes, and I just remembered after, I wrote yourself.
Because I think it's true. Yeah, I think it's very important, we, you know, we've seen to have an NFL game where someone goes down, well, we could have the same thing in our football fields, just because you have a defibrillator in the building, and at Berg, you know, by the time you got over there, it'd be, to get it, it'd be too late. So I just think, you know, we need to add those, but, but you're.
I was thinking you mentioned something about 30,000 of that 80 or something.
I was just saying half and half, but, but I, if you want to support, you know, additional money, because really, we ought to be looking at how many we need rather than how much we want, I mean.
Right, I'm just saying.
How many do we need?
I wanted to get those numbers, we've kind of talked to the high school principals, especially in the past, but that number's changed because we've added some, so I'll give a firm number for you.
They're about $1,300 apiece.
Yeah, will you bring it to us next meeting? You're a good man.
And I appreciate that, because I'm, I mean, I'm 100% for that. So, anything else? That it? Mary France?
Right now.
Yeah.
So, I don't have anything to say, I guess.
Well, we look forward to seeing you in person next meeting, so save it up for them.
Sorry you couldn't be there.
Save it up for them. Mr. Hoag?
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, not only my respect from the board and everything, our condolences to Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
And, you know, so I know it's been a tough, tough few days for you, and you've got other things going on with other family members, and things, you know, get left out.
Thank you.
I'm clear. Good?
Okay, I think, I do want to say one thing, I'll go ahead and say, thank you all for this wind chime right here, and it has my sister's name on it and everything, there's, it's great, I really appreciate it, and I thank you all for your condolences, I truly do.
When the wind blows through it, you hear, that's hard to talk to.
There you go. Or anytime we're having a dinner, or anything like that, it's going to be there too, so. She's my much older sister, by the way, I always said that, so I have to say that one more time.
And, and I don't think I have anything other than to echo what Mr. Cooper said about the vape detectors, I mean, and the defibrillators, I think, and like I said, we, we ought to be the ones that are looking toward defibrillators. Remember, we saved the revenue one time at Lincoln with a defibrillator that if we didn't have it there.
Could be a job, could be.
It could be, it could be anywhere, so. They work, and, and they're, they're relatively simple, most people are afraid of them because they think they're going to do, but they won't let you shock them if you're not out of rhythm, and, and they're very foolproof, so, you know, I'm a big advocate of those, but the vape detectors are well, because I can tell you from my daily life, you know, how many times there are alarms at our schools when they don't know what's in those vapes, and we're getting fentanyl and some other things, and along with that, if, I think at nine o'clock tonight, there was a town hall meeting on CNN about fentanyl, and Lou Ortenzio is on that panel tonight, so we may hopefully get some insight about Clarksburg, and, and really what people like me have to deal with on a daily basis. Not only in, in Clarksburg, but Harrison County, and really nationwide, so. With that, that's all I have, is our motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Move second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Joe. Joe, peace, go on, peace.
See ya.